Good afternoon, Board members and college staff visitors. Today, the time is 6:00 PM on this, the ninth day of November 2021, and I call this meeting of the Laredo College Board of Trustees to order. Mr. Delgado, can you do the prayer, please?
Loving and gracious God, you're indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our college events, for all of our faculty, our staff, and most importantly, our students. We ask that you bless them abundantly as we continue to seek your wisdom, your guidance, your courage, and your strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in decisions that we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Keep us from shortsightedness and pettiness, and help us to make the decisions that are for the good of all and guard us from blind self-interest. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Judge?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Ramos, could you please call Roe?
Yes, ma'am. Lupita Cepeda?
Present.
Jorge Jedy Delgado?
Present.
Jackie Levin Ramos, present. Cynthia Mahrez, absent. Mercure Martinez Jr.?
Present.
Dr. Henry Carranza?
He was tied up at another meeting, and he called me to let me know that he would not be able to make it.
Thank you, sir. Esteban Rangel?
He's here. He's in the back. So do I mark him, present or absent?
I believe he's absent for now.
He's speaking to Ms. Dr. Tejina. Karina Lisondo?
Present.
Tita Cantuvella?
Here.
Esteban Rangel?
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos. That the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Do we have any public testimony?
No, ma'am.
No public testimony, okay. Next item is discussion and possible action. Discuss the Laredo College Board of Trustees presidential search process and review, revise, and finalize the presidential profile. Ms. Lupita Cepeda and Dr. Julie Goldner. So today, we had, yesterday and today, yesterday we had three different forums attended by employees and board members. It went very well. Ms. Goldner got a good amount of things to bring to us today. Today, we had our meeting with our community leaders, our staff, and students also attend, and that went very well. A lot of information was given, a lot of information was discussed, and Dr. Goldner will go on ahead and discuss all of that with us. All yours.
Excellent, and thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board. First, on behalf of the Association of Community College Trustees, I would like to thank each of you for the opportunity to be of service throughout this critical process. As was noted, there's been wonderful input and support. There were three public forums yesterday. The prior week, there was an electronic survey distributed throughout the institution. Based on all of that feedback from the forums and the electronic surveys, a draft presidential profile was put together. This morning at 9:00 AM, the Presidential Search Committee had their first meeting. Outstanding group of individuals representing different components of the community and the institution. We talked about the charge from the Board. We talked about confidentiality. We went through the timeline, which is before you, and next steps in the process. The bulk of the time was spent in thoughtful discussion on the draft profile. They really took ownership, made edits that better reflect the college and the community. So incredible input. So what I would like to do is, I know those trustees who served on the search committee already went through the timeline, but with the permission of the Board, I would like to take a few minutes to walk through it to make sure that the full Board is comfortable. And of course, one of my goals here this evening is to answer all of your questions about the process. So if there's any lingering questions, please use this time to share, and we can walk through the steps. So if you look at the timeline, we've already accomplished the open forums, we've had our first search committee meeting, and we're at the point of this special meeting. And the goal is to answer your questions and to get that profile reviewed, make final edits, and approve it. Because recruitment cannot start until there's a profile, because candidates really can't decide if they're going to potentially be a good fit until that document is approved. So we'll walk through that. Once that profile is approved, national ads will go out on the Chronicle, Inside Higher Ed, national publications. The profile will also be posted on ACCT's website, and we'll engage on one-to-one outreach, because that is often how you get some of the most competitive candidates. Some of the best people are busy being successful and aren't looking for their next career move. So we actively engage in input, we accept nominations, we encourage recommendations and follow-up to cultivate a rich and strong candidate pool for the search committee to select from. As you'll see, the target date for applications is February 15, so we have a healthy and appropriate recruitment period. Then on February 23, the search committee all committed to review the confidential applications. We set aside specific times for their independent and confidential review. They will submit their initial ratings. That will go into an Excel spreadsheet. We will start the meeting at 8:00 AM on February 24. The goal of that meeting will be to discuss the candidate pool, to see where there's a lot of interest, where there isn't interest, to invite confidential first-round candidates for interviews. Made the recommendation that those interviews do not occur on campus. At that point, it is still confidential, and it's a small world in higher ed, so we're working to have those first-round interviews off of the campus. Those interviews will take place on March 10 and 11, two full days. After the final interview, the committee will deliberate, determine three to four finalists to forward to the full Board. At that point, the committee will have done their work, they will have met their charge, and then the full Board gets the applications and takes ownership of the process. Right now, the week of April 4 has been set aside. Typically, boards like to interview one candidate per day, so that there are public forums, that they have tours of both campuses, an opportunity to meet with the cabinet. And some point soon, the Board will want to set aside days for those interviews, because it will be the week of April 4 before we know it. So again, most boards like to have the daytime activities occur at the campus, perhaps dedicate 4:00 to 5:30 each day for an interview. And then an option that the Board can discuss at a future time is, do you also want to have dinner with the candidates? And perhaps invite their spouse to join them for that portion, to get to see them in a different light, not just in a formal interview setting. So some point soon, I'm going to ask that the Board dedicates those dates for the finalists. In addition to interviewing each candidate, it will be important to set aside three to four hours to deliberate. Typically, that is done within one to two days of the final interview, because you want to do it all while it is still fresh. Often, if a Board has four candidates, they'll interview Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, afternoon, and evening, and then set aside time on that Friday or the following Monday. So again, so all of this happens quickly. The other reason for this to happen quickly is that you could have your top candidate in another search. You never know. So putting things off at that point, when multiple searches are going on throughout the state and many throughout the country, keeping the momentum and moving things quickly is important. Once you set aside your date for the deliberations, please let me know, because I will get that on my calendar. I can join remotely, and I will be sharing the confidential reference reports through Zoom. I don't need to be here, but I do want to join to be able to be available to answer your questions, to share the confidential reference reports, and to be of assistance. So that is the week of April 4. Some boards choose to do a site visit. ACCT categorically recommends it, that two or three trustees quickly visit your first-choice candidate's institution, so that you can see with your own eyes, are these the programs and buildings that they described? And at that point, you will have had your own interview, perhaps a dinner with the candidate. You will have received the reference reports, you will have seen background checks. You will also have all of the feedback from every forum. So really, at that point, site visits are almost more of a verification, and they can be in conjunction with negotiating. So in other words, negotiations can really kick off, or sometimes at the end of a successful site visit, there will already be a draft contract that is ready to present to your first-choice candidate, again, to help things move quickly. Any questions so far? And we will be working in conjunction with the college team to have an announcement ready to go at the appropriate time with your sole finalist. And of course, as I'm sure you are aware, that there needs to be a public notice of the sole finalist for 21 days prior to a contract being signed, and that is unique to Texas law. So that really walks you through the timeline, again, finalizing those dates in your busy calendars for the interviews and deliberation, and seeing if there's interest at this point on a site visit, and you may even want to set aside a day or two now for that week of April 11.
Question, Madam Chair?
Chair recognizes Ms. Rellinghead.
Thank you. For those meetings, once, I guess, the selected three, four, whatever the committee would want to bring to the full Board, are we going to be, you're mentioning dinner, you're mentioning several meetings, that we're going to have to interact with the candidates, are we going to be, are they going to be open to the public?
No. Sorry?
As legal, I don't know. Are they going to be, maybe that's a question for us? Are they going to be open to the public?
That's a question for legal. No.
If I may?
Yes.
Would these be the?
Chair recognizes Mr. Mayor.
The meetings, the confidential interviews that the Presidential Search Committee does? Or?
No, once it's already coming to the full Board.
Okay. And I think, just to be clear, looking at the timeline, my understanding is that there's confidential interviews with semifinalists in March 10 and 11, then three to five finalists are forwarded to the Board, but the Board doesn't interview those until April the 4th?
Exactly, exactly. To give the college time to plan, I believe spring break is in late March, so it's when everyone is back from spring break.
So my question is, do we have to post those meetings, or do we have?
Yes.
Do we have, but are they going to be private?
They can be held in executive session, and I'm not sure if the practice has been in the past with ACCT to recommend private meetings with the candidates. They can be in private, it would be executive session here, is how it's referred to in Texas.
That is a best practice when the state law permits for the Board to really feel comfortable getting to know each candidate, and of course, if you have dinner with each candidate, it's really best to not post it.
That's my question, like, is it going to be like a set of four, a set of three of us there, or is it going to be like a dinner with like the full nine Board members?
Oh, got it, got it. So.
That's my question.
Yes. I think it's, the intent is for the Board, which would be the entire Board, the nine Board members, to interview the final candidates during the week of April the 4th.
Exactly, and each, so it is critical for every trustee to interview every finalist. We recommend a 90-minute interview for each candidate. So let's say 4:00 to 5:30 each day, there are three days or four days, then perhaps a dinner afterwards, so that you have 90 minutes, probably 45 minutes of structured questions, where you ask the same eight to 10 questions of every candidate, plus an additional 45 minutes of conversation and back and forth.
Okay. And the questions are going to be compressed by, I guess, can we put questions to be able to do that?
The Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
So what we do is we compile the questions at that given time before we do the interviews. But the, going back to your question, because I kind of sort of sense that maybe the interview process is done behind closed doors, right? But during the day, the individual candidates, they meet with forums in the campus, they tour the campus, we assign ambassadors to them, so that they can take them to the South Campus and to this campus, and they're with them during the entire day. The ambassadors are actually individuals that work either on either two of the campuses. And so they are designated to that individual, it could be two or three people, and they take them to the different areas. And so they come back here, this is like the last phase of the day for them, to come and interview. And then the dinner afterwards. But that's why she's saying it's the four days. If it's four candidates, it's four days.
One per candidate?
One per day.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I believe the last time we did it where we had two per day. If I'm not mistaken, we think we had two per day.
I can go and check, and we can make it work. Some boards will even do everyone in one day. Don't recommend that. But the most important thing is that every trustee can be at every interview, whether that ends up being one per day or two over two days. We'll make it work. We will make it work.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Vela.
One thing is their wives or husbands will come with them, especially, you know, if they're out of town, they'll come and check out the campus and, you know, see housing, and they do have someone from campus that will host them. The wives separate, and then, you know.
Yes.
Chair recognizes Dr. Tejina.
Dr. Tejina, for the record, I was an ambassador the last time walking a candidate, and if I remember correctly, we would take them to an open forum at the South Campus, bring them, do a quick tour, and then the first candidate would have lunch with the Board members, and that's where the interviews happen. And then they had business and industry or school partner sub-interviews. So let's say the Board decides to have sub-forums, where the candidates will meet with the superintendents or Tammy Yu's president, and then another business and industry, that is up to you all, you know, who you want out of the community for the finalists to meet. I think I said that correctly. Or vice versa.
That's right.
And then the opposite happens, and they come over here to do the open forum at the main, and then whoever is the second candidate on that, you'll have dinner with them, or her, as opposed to. So it's really up to you all how you want to set it up, the open forums. We can get that for you all, so that way we can, whenever we work with, or Veronica Martinez, who's our liaison, you know, she can present what we did last time, and then what you want to revise as a Board, to give Julie better direction when we get the finalists.
Chair recognizes Mr. Rellinghead.
Yes, yeah, I think that's great. I think it's very crucial that we do allow the school districts, especially the superintendents, to have some type of conversation, being that we do do a lot of dual programs with them. You know, both school districts and even the private ones, maybe have one for the private, all the private schools as well, because I think it's going to be very important. Another question that I have, and I don't know if maybe anybody could answer, but have we allowed our staff to meet with any of them in the past?
Of course, yes.
But like, what I mean, our staff is, I mean, like, if anybody would want to sign up, let it be, I don't know, a custodian, let it be a professor, have we allowed our staff to meet with them, so they could, I don't know, maybe provide us a feedback on who they also find as a good candidate? Have we ever done that?
The forums.
The forums. Chair recognizes Dr. Tejina.
During the open forums, what everybody, you don't monitor what's going to be asked. The employees and community are welcome to come to the open forums and just propose those questions, and then there was evaluations done afterwards, where it was anonymously submitted. And then from there, they rated, to my understanding, I don't, since I wasn't part of the committee, I don't know what percentage that factored in into the decision-making. But yes, it did take.
On that one, I also want to have, like, put that input. I think it's very important that anybody from Laredo College, you know, no matter your title, that has the ability to give us, in, of course, with being able that, you know, it could be confidential, you know, give us some type of feedback, so we can be able to grab that information and put it into the report, because I would want to have some feedback from anybody that works for Laredo College, so.
And when we had the forums on Monday, everybody was invited.
Yes.
Everybody was invited to come and give us their input, and we did have a couple, yeah, a chunk. That came in at all three forums.
Yeah.
The Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
Just to add to that, there was a compilation of all of the documents that were submitted from the faculty and staff and the public, and they were submitted to the Board for review for that particular time. So I did want to ask Ms. Goldner, Julie, is there other opportunities, like I've seen other colleges not only do four consecutive days, but they've also done like once a week? Is that what some colleges have done, where they interview or they do the forums like one week and then the other one the other week? Is that recommended? Because I saw it in one of the colleges.
Not really, because if you have four candidates, you're taking up a month, and you could theoretically lose someone by spreading it out that long.
Yeah.
Plus, you have momentum.
Right. It's because I did see it in one of them.
It's unusual.
Yeah, it was unusual, right? Because they started in a month, and they ended up at the end of the month, and each one had one week difference. But I don't know, maybe, I just saw the forums on the Brunswick Board. Did they do that?
I don't believe it was spread out quite that much.
But it was a.
Maybe they did two one week and two the following week.
There you go. Yes, you're right.
Madam Chair. Sorry, I have a question.
Chair recognizes Mr. Rellinghead.
And maybe, maybe Ms. Ramos can answer. On the previous one, did we invite the superintendents around Zapata ISD?
No.
And the reason for it is because, I mean, we do cater to some of these Webb County ISD, Freer ISD, I don't know if that, maybe just, you know, have them also give us some feedback of what they also think, and the reason for that is because, again, we cater to those students as well. Have we thought about doing that?
We did, Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
So what we did is we invited them with just UISD and LISD.
Okay.
And they came and they had a room, one of these rooms right here, and they met with the candidates there, one by one.
Okay.
And they rated them also, and we provided, they provided the information.
So we do invite them?
Yes.
Yes, you may.
Great.
I mean, the, once the organization, the interviews and the forums take place, Ms. Goldner is going to be able to facilitate that along with Dr. Martinez as well.
Great.
So that's how they put it all together.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Vela.
Esteban, Dr. Gold, she's the one that pretty much does everything. But yeah, you know, everybody's included locally, locally, because we want feedback from everybody. It's a very interesting process. It really is a very, very interesting process. It takes a lot of time.
Yeah.
So.
But you have a good idea, because we do handle Zapata and Jim Hogg County students.
I mean.
Yeah, that is a good idea.
We'll take the idea into consideration.
Yeah, I think it's important, because a lot of them do travel. I think anybody that's around 50, maybe 75 mile radius, you know, I think it's important, because a lot of them do travel this way to be, or maybe even take online classes or whatever. So I think it's important. Thank you.
Anything else? You can continue.
So as a next step, I would like the trustees who served on today's committee meeting to share with the full Board what went into the edits.
Madam Chair. Yes. No, just joking. I'm sorry. I'm just joking, Mr. Delgado.
Well, I was hoping that a couple of the trustees who were serving on the search committee could share with the full Board a little bit about the edit session, and then I'll add to that, because I want the full Board to understand all the work that went into today's discussion.
So, you want to start? So with you, you have the presidential profile.
Right.
That we went through, the whole committee, we went through everything, line per line. If you see, there's some, whatever's in red is some of the things that were included or added. So it was really good. I mean, everybody had a good input. So if you have any questions, if you'd like to do any changes, today's the time, or right now is the time to go ahead and do it. Now, Chair recognizes Mr. Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think the general understanding from everybody that was in the committee was to make sure that we create a presidential profile of what we want, I mean, essentially. And I think it was definitely grateful to be a part of that process, because we had faculty, staff, members of the community, members of the business community that took part in going initially line by line over everything that is here, to make sure that everything is not only consistent with our mission, our vision, and what it is that we want for our students, our faculty, our staff, and most importantly, of what the Board will eventually see and work with, the individual, whether it be male or female. But a lot of work definitely went into all of these edits that were here, and definitely grateful for not only Ms. Goldner, but also Dr. Martinez and everybody else that took part in this process and all these edits, because I know, I'm looking at them and remembering what we discussed, and I am, I shouldn't say I'm surprised, but you all definitely put everything together. With, you know, the number of individuals, I think it was almost 20 people that were there, so with regards to all the edits, you know, definitely kudos to both of you all.
I like it.
Let me go ahead and just recognize Ms. Ramos, since she was the other one. Trustee that was there, then you'll be next.
So, thank you, ma'am. So what we did is we tried to make a summarization of the representation of our college, to begin with, right? So the individual who's going to apply for this, for the presidential position, will review the college and what it is and what it has to offer, and also the campuses and the community as well. In addition to that comes the position. What is the position that we're actually looking to fill? It includes also the challenges and the opportunities that might be in place as we speak, as we write out this presidential profile. And the ideal characteristics are things that the forums, they compiled information from the forums, put them together, and determined what are some of the ideal characteristics that we'd like to see in the individuals that are applying. And then last but not least are the qualifications. So you have at the very end of this presidential profile, you have the qualifications that indicate what are the minimum qualifications someone should meet before they feel that they qualify based on the ideal characteristics, and also based on what the college has to offer. So the college is going to, the college is shining out in the first two pages, and then in the other pages, it's what the representative. and then in the other pages, it's what the representative who is going to apply for the presidential is going to look to see what, how that he or she may shine out and be a part of this process.
Chair recognizes, uh, Ms. Elizondo.
In reference to the qualifications, I noticed that one out of four, it's required. So, um, my question to Ms. Golda is, is the significance here in level administrative experience preferred? So, is the classroom teaching experience?
Uh, so for clarification, we could add is required.
Okay, so.
I believe that was an assumed absolute.
Right.
Okay.
So, for clarification purposes, classroom teaching experience, it's required?
Yes.
It's required?
All four of those are required. All four forms.
Okay, but except, oh, the last one, I think.
Except by the bilingual.
It's preferred. It's preferred, yeah, right.
Uh, just based on my opinion, I think classroom teaching should only be preferred, not required. Since we're limiting the options, I mean, the, I understand this is a higher education institution. Nonetheless, we are trying to hire for a CEO, we want someone that's also like business oriented in that sense, so, um, I would like to ask for consideration, just to be a little bit more open in terms of, I mean, we have great executive administrators here in our, in our college too, who I don't think that they have taught. Even though they have.
They all have taught. They all have taught.
At least one class? Okay, well, I, I think just so we can be a little bit more open.
And, and we can add, so you prefer to see classroom teaching, uh,
Preferred.
Preferred, instead of experienced?
Yes, I think so, I mean, because a CEO does a lot more than those things, and I, even though you, I think you all did a great job trying to, uh, with the amalgamation of this document, nonetheless, I think that we need also an executive and, like, have that, also that business aspect as well, not just.
And everybody feel okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Madam Chair. Yes, uh, Ms., Dr. Gold.
May I just take a moment to just give you the background in terms of the rationale that the committee, um, came up with? And what I shared with the committee is that because the doctorate is required, at some point, someone has probably, it doesn't even say, um, full time, it doesn't say, uh, for even a credit, a credit. It could be, um, having taught, if you have a doctorate, at some point, you probably assisted in teaching or had some sort of classroom responsibility at some point in one's career. Um, so it was something that was important to faculty, but of course, it, it is absolutely the board's decision.
And just to compare with the past, the, the previous, uh, presidential search or the, the job description that it required for the, for that particular.
Yes, it is, yeah, yes.
Chair recognizes Ms. Vela.
I think one thing that we need to remember is we are instit-, an institution of higher education, and it would be very, very nice to have a leader that has taught, has worked in all the trenches, including faculty, teaching, 'cause it gives you a better, you know, uh, viewpoint to everything, and a better understanding in everything that's going on. And most people, Gadi, most people start off as an instructor and then work their way up. I mean.
I, 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 no, this is just for discussion purposes, I mean, I, I think it'll be nice, but I think we should, but I mean, it, it's up to you.
And, and we understand, but the majority of your higher education educators have taught, either at a elementary.
Oh, so it's, it's.
It's just classroom training. We're not putting specifics, but they have taught either at a, an elementary, uh, or high school level.
It's okay.
Or at a college level, so, so is that okay?
Yes.
Do you understand that? Okay. Chair recognizes Mr. Rangheli.
Thank you, uh, thank you, President, Madam President. Um, so, just to, just to, to clear this up, these four points are the only way you will get disqualified from submitting your application. These are the four main points, to be able to say, if I'm, if I wanna apply, I need to have these four points to, to, so I could submit my application.
Those are the absolutes.
Of course, we're gonna have people that might not have, might not have something that we would want right here, but as long as they meet these four points, they, they will be able to become a candidate, right?
Well, anyone can apply, but they may not meet the qualifications, which means the committee.
Which, that's what I'm trying to say, you will not qualify if you do not hit these four points.
That's what that, that, that is telling the world, yes.
Now, my other question is, um, did we consider, now, I don't know, just for thought, did we consider on putting, um, uh, I, I guess, like, classroom teaching experience? Did we say, or have we ever done, or say, five years, ten years of, of that experience? Would we want that?
I think that.
I don't know, I'm just saying, or, or, or the reason for it is, I mean, classroom experience, okay, my, my important, for me, is I guess the experi-, the administrative experience in higher education. I think there, uh, it is kind of important to put at least, I don't know, three, five years? Because if you haven't even been in an administrative level, only maybe for six months or a year, should we consider that as, okay, you could apply, instead of saying, well, at least this person or these candidates have had three, five years of upper, uh, of a higher education experience? I don't know if that's something, you know, important that the, that the board would wanna see? You know, especially on that one, because that person will have pretty much the, you know, is gonna be the president. So, did we consider that?
As a, as a committee, no, we didn't talk about that as far as setting an amount of years that they've been in the classroom training, because again, then you're gonna block a lot of people that are qualified.
Maybe not on the classroom, maybe that could just be open, you have two years, five years, whatever it is. But I, I guess for what I think is important is the upper, uh, education experience, administrative experience.
Right.
To be able to have at least three years that you've worked as maybe VP, provost, whatever it might be. I think it's important to have at least, you know, three years, five years, because anybody that has a doctorate and has six months of experience is gonna be able to apply.
But now, now you're talking about administrative.
Yes.
Provost.
Right.
Okay, so you're going from classroom.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, classroom, I understand to just leave it open.
Okay.
I'm talking about the, 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 um, the experience in, in, in higher education in the administrative level.
So now you've moved up to the other one, significant?
Yes.
Senior level administrative experience.
That's the one that I'm, like, I'm, I'm more concerned than actually the classroom.
Yeah.
Because would we want somebody that just became a VP six months ago?
Yeah, I get it.
The word, I'm sorry.
Well, the chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
The word significant?
What is?
Is determined to be, mm, between
Yeah, that's.
Five year, five and up, you know, or.
See, but that.
I mean, not necessarily, I don't know, Dr. Fred, can you, can you help us out, Dr. Fred? A significant would be someone who's been two, more than two years, or five and up?
Fred, so at least for the record, Vice President for Student Success and Enrollment, uh, significant leaves it to subjectivity?
Exactly.
And so, I think if you're trying to get to a number, it may be clearer if you provide that number.
Provide a number.
I'm not sure.
I think, I, I, I just. I mean, I don't know what the board would feel, but I think at least three years of, 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 three, three or more, of course, with, with, um, with administrative experience is, is important, because if we put it just as significant, can it just be six months?
Chair recognizes Mr. Delgado.
Uh, Ms. Golda, uh, in your experience with regards to qualifications such as the ones listed that was approved by the committee, what would your, uh, based on your expertise, what would your recommendation be with regards to that particular line?
It's interesting, because the reality is, people don't apply unless they, they have three years, they wouldn't be a serious candidate. Um, but if it makes the board feel more comfortable, there's nothing wrong with adding three to five. Um, it, it is a safe addition, I would say thirty to forty percent of the profiles do quantify. Um, the others, just leave it significant to let people self-assess. And the goal is, again, if the number starts to get too large, people might say, oh, they want three to five, I'm at four, I'm not going to submit, I don't think they're, they'll take a serious look at me. So, part of it is to encourage a broad and rich range of candidates, but, uh, three to five will still yield a, a great candidate pool.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
I think when you put the number, you, you kinda sort of make the group smaller.
Absolutely.
In other presidential profiles, there's been numbers like, let's say, ten years of senior level. So then you've, you've removed all those people that don't have ten years or more, and so they, you have to. But again, it depends on us as a group.
That's right.
To determine whether that's something feasible, 'cause like, if, if you, you're asking about the, the numbers, right? So, I would, I would, I suggested something, and I suggested something like significant senior level administrative experience in higher education, preferably in community colleges. But when we talked it all together as a, as, as a group, they provided some input and some perspective, and so that's why we, we didn't put it there, but the board can always come back and say, you know what? Maybe that's an idea that we need to discuss, and like, with Ms. Elizondo, that she, uh, pre-, uh, prefaced the classroom teaching experience required. So, how do we, how do we make it our own? How do we make it something that's gonna stand out and attract those candidates?
Uh, Chair recognizes Ms. Elizondo.
Oh, um, go ahead, so, I'll, I'll go back.
Henry, Mr. Rangheli.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Um, I think, I think it, mm, minimum three years, I think is important. Uh, you know, of course, you know, we would wanna say, here comes a candidate with ten years, twelve years of upper administrative experience, but you know, we have some good goal-getters, I think, that people that might wanna apply and say, I, I feel capable of, of being able to, I got four and a half years, and I, I would wanna take a shot at it. And I think three years is a, is a good amount for upper, uh, for administrative, uh, for higher education. I think that's a good set amount to at least be able to apply, I wouldn't want anybody that has less than three years, for sure. That's my opinion.
Ms. Elizondo.
No, I, I wanna echo, um, Mr. Rangheli's, I think it's very, very important, especially because of the nature of the duties and responsibilities of the, of the next president. I think, I also want to point that Ms. Vela brought during our, um, meeting, yesterday or today?
Yesterday.
Okay, sorry, I don't know. And I think, uh, also, and I don't see it, uh, during this, throughout this draft, and it was like the, the workforce, uh, experience.
I think it, it is here somewhere.
But with experience in, uh, economic development background with global and water experience.
It, it is here.
No, I, I saw workforce offering.
Diverse social and economic. Yeah.
But which.
It's also on the, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, okay, let me, let me get everybody in order here.
So, next was Ms. Vela. You keep talking.
I know, I can talk to you.
Did you have something to say?
Yes, I, I did, I do. You know, when it comes to the time, we do have, I, I agree with you, we have to have at least a minimum. And, you know, when we as a board review the applicants, that's something that you can look at. And look at it very closely, and see the experience that they have, and whether they fit with us. Someone with two years may be extraordinary, you know? I mean, it, just because you don't have the full five or the three, doesn't mean you're gonna be good, or, or not, you know? So, I think.
And I think that's why, as a group, we generalized it and not locked it in with three years, because remember, we are gonna have all those applications, we are gonna be able to look at all the applications and decide, okay, she has, and like she said, two years, and she might be outstanding, or he or she might be outstanding with two years. So I think by setting a number, I think we kind of cut out a lot of the groups, but we will have the opportunity of going through all the, the
The committee, you mean.
The applications, the committee will have the opportunity of going through all the applications, and then pick the ones that will qualify, and in all probability, they'll have five, ten years of, of, uh, experience in higher education. Chair recognizes Mr. Delgado.
No, I, I spoke to her, I apologize.
Okay, any, anything, so, what is the consensus? You all wanna put the, the years?
I, no, I would like to.
Chair recognizes Ms. Elizondo.
Thank you, I would like to ask, uh, Judge Martinez, 'cause I know he's very passionate about the business sector and all. What's your intake on, on this?
Frankly, I support the, si-, you know, the, the, the conditions that are being stipi-, uh, stipulated, so we've already have gone through that experience previously, so, that, frankly, I, I go along with that, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Oh, we, and so, no.
Chair recognizes Mr. Delgado.
Uh, one of the concerns from, uh, Ms. Elizondo was with regards to economic development, uh, and, what was the other one, Kari?
Workforce.
It was workforce, economic development.
Workforce.
Yeah, so, yeah, and just wanted to let everybody know that with regards to those workforces specifically stated in regards to, uh, under the presidential fo-, profile as far as the review, and everything else regarding what our city is, what our city brings, what we entail, um.
It's in there.
Yeah, it's in there.
'Cause we discussed it a lot. With us being there, workforce was discussed quite a bit, uh, economic development was discussed quite a bit, because those were items that were brought up, uh, in the forums the day before.
Madam Chair, ma'am.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
So, to, to piggyback, piggyback on that, it's number three, is an experienced administrator with a successful track record, improving delivery methods and developing in-demand academic and workforce offerings. Number six, a dynamic leader dedicated to enhancing lives, continuously advancing the community college mission, and demonstrates a comprehensive approach to the diverse social and economic needs of all college students. Um, there is another one, but in, there's several of them, but those are the major ones that deal with workforce development. There are others in the challenges and opportunities, but that's what is, uh, going to be, that's what's, uh, that's what they're gonna have to deal with, and one of them is the partnering, number three, partnering with industry, secondary, and post-secondary educational and government entities to promote the economic development and growth of the region. Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thirteen, Verda.
I know there was a lot of discussion about it.
I don't think it says, like, economic development person, but, but it's a, it's a combination of things, so.
Number thirteen is an, an extrapreneurial leader who builds partnerships, business, businesses, and industry, and civic entities in alignment with the college mission. Any other questions?
Can we go back and affirm our qualifications? Just make sure that we're all in agreement with our qualifications?
Oh, yes, so, we're gonna go back to qualifications. So, is everybody in agreement, the way the bullet points are at?
That's fine, if.
Okay?
Yeah, maybe.
Mr. Rangheli?
Yeah, well, I guess, then, if the committee can make sure, 'cause I, I do understand if you have a, a two-year person and, and is a superstar, well, you know what, you know, bring him to the full board, you know? We, we find that his resume is impeccable, his or her resume is impeccable. But, um, I guess, I'll leave it up to the committee to be able to make sure that if you don't have minimum three years of exp-, or not minimum, but, you know, to look at him and say, this person has six months, you know, it's a.
Julie's real good about keeping the committee in sync, and making sure that we're following everything that we have in place.
That's fine.
She keeps us in check.
She kept, she keeps us in check. So, is, is everybody okay with the qualifications? Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
I wouldn't, I want you to make a motion, so.
Okay, so, Ms. Ramos makes a motion.
I'll second.
I have a second by Mr. Delgado. Any other que-, any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries to, for the qualifications. So now we go to, we started back. So now we go to, uh, we started backwards, so. So did we go back to the college?
Well, we can open it up to just any other final edits in general.
Okay.
Without having to go section by section.
Okay. And then we could just approve the whole?
As a whole, yes.
As a whole, okay. Well.
No.
No, we, we only.
We only approve the qualifications.
We only approved the qualifications.
Oh, I wasn't gonna do everything.
Chair recognizes Mrs., Dr. Rodriguez.
Um, Dr. Tejirina for the record, it is best if they approve not only the qualifications, but the entire profile, right?
We're coming back.
We're, we're coming back.
Okay, all right, good.
And that's why I say we started at the end, but now we're coming back.
We went backwards.
I'm sorry, that's, I was asking, okay.
Chair recognizes Mr. Ranghel.
Yes, thank you. Now, let me ask, before we approve the whole thing, let me go to the staff. Are you, oh, are, is, are all of you okay with what we're deciding, because being that you all also, you know, have a lot of input of who's, who you're gonna work with, is that something that you guys feel comfortable on us looking, uh, for?
They were at the forums. Again, that is what the committee is for, we had staff.
Yes, they were there.
We had staff, we had students.
Yeah, they were.
Uh, we had the forums prior to, so all that pretty much has.
They were there.
Believe me, the staff was very, very involved today, the, the staff and the faculty. Uh, chair recognizes Dr. Adesola.
If I can add, Ms. Rangel, Dr. Adesola, interim provost for the record. So we all had, and we all did participate in some of these forums, so, uh, we all had our chance to provide input into what the presidential, presidential profile should be, or we expect to be, so I think we are, we're all comfortable with what has been presented so far. I haven't seen the entire thing myself, but, so I'm listening, but, um, but so far, so good.
Good. Dr. Solis.
Chair recognizes Dr. Solis.
Fred Solis for the record, uh, I, I believe, even though we have not been privy to the completed document, uh, in, in my opinion, we trust what the committee work is and has been done, and so we'll, we, at least for me, I put my trust in the committee that they understand what's necessary.
Great.
Thank you, Fred. Thank you, gentlemen. Did you have a question, Ms. Gold?
Dr. Tejirina.
No, Dr. Tejirina. Dr. Tejirina.
Uh, Dr. Tejirina for the record, I do have a copy, and I quickly read it, and I think the committee did a great job identifying what Laredo College is, and I think ultimately to answer some of your concerns, Mr. Rangel, I agree with you, but it's gonna come down to the resumes and the application, and the demonstrated work that the profile is asking, right? Uh, so I think it's all in the demonstration of the impact he or she has done, and, but it, it's a good profile.
It's a good, thank you. My, my answer, it was answered.
Your, your, your question was answered.
I'm, I'm ready to approve.
Chair recognizes Ms. Vela.
I, I think it's excellent. I really, really think it's, I commend you all. I think it's very, very good. I was at two of the three forums, and everything is pretty much covered, and you did an excellent job, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Motion to approve the full.
Okay, so I have a motion by.
Second.
Mr. Rangel, I have a second by Ms. Ramos. Any discussion? No discussion heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to approve the whole presidential profile.
Yes.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Julie.
You did an outstanding job with us yesterday and today, in keeping us in check, and making sure that all the committee and, and forums were all very well informed, Dr. Martinez as well, we had her typing and re-racing and backspacing, but she kept up with us, with the whole committee. Thank you very much, very much appreciated.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Board of Directors, for, trustees to, for this as well. Madam Chair, ma'am. Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
Madam Chair, for the record, may we just, uh, let the record reflect that there were two absent board members, Ms. Maris and Dr. Caranza, so that the record will, will reflect that, as we have created the presidential profile, that we did, it's, it's on record.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos. Chair recognizes Mr. Rangel.
Thank you. First of all, I want to apologize for not making it yesterday, um, I, I had to, had an emergency in the valley. Um, I just want to go ahead and, one, you know, commend the board for the work that, that each, each one of you is doing. I want to commend Dr. Marise Alat Tejerina, um, for the work that you and your staff is doing, um, and, um, and just say thank you for each and every one of you, you know, holding ground while we, while we go out there and, and, and get a new, a new president, a new, a new president, so thank you all for your hard work, and thank you for the committee and the board for, for taking action and, and making sure that we, we work diligently on making sure that we get the right candidate. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, uh, chair recognizes Judge Martinez.
This does not involve anything dealing with, uh, our present, uh, items on, on this meeting, but, uh, I want to ask a legal question in reference to it. This involves some bringing information, uh, as to what was, uh, done, uh, yesterday and the day before, that actually will have a positive impact on Laredo College, on the possibility of implementing a new program. I don't know whether, whether, if I were to bring and inform the, you know, the, the members of the board as to specifically, and, and, an item that actually will have, hopefully, a positive impact on Laredo College, uh, in the future, and, uh, I was very much, very much part of it, because we also had, this involves, uh, a, a program in the oil and gas, of which, uh, Mr. Orlando Cepeda did an incredible, most impressive presentation. And, uh, what, the reason why I'm bringing it up is because, uh, right now, for your information, all right, I'm gonna bring it up.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, is it okay for him to discuss it? It's not on the agenda.
Madam President, and board members, uh, it's, it is not on the agenda, so I wouldn't get into a.
No.
Discussion about it. Well, and, and so let's look at it, the agenda says, discuss the Laredo College Board of Trustees Presidential Search Process, and review, revise, and finalize the presidential profile. Now, this did come up during the presidential search process, so I think is what Judge Martinez is telling us, but it's not identified, an oil and gas program is not, so if I would, I just mentioned it briefly, that probably bring it up is another item.
All right.
There is a slight connection in the process.
Okay, well, then I will ask the board, uh, and administration to bring, to put that item on the agenda at the next, uh, regular board meeting, because I honestly feel that the college can have a tremendous positive impact about what is being proposed by, uh, the, uh, people out of, uh, of Pemex for bringing in and instructing some of their Pemex, uh, personnel here at Laredo College, of which, uh, the kind of background and experience that is invaluable, that can be, uh, presented or, uh, given by, in this case, Mr. Cepeda, uh, I, I gotta tell you this, the people that were involved left incredibly impressed, they, they, nothing but accolades, and I, I, I think it's important for members of this board to be brought up to date as to, uh, the positive impression that was left by these people that went back to Mexico City. Okay?
Thank you, Judge.
If I'm in order, I'd like to, uh, also, uh, compliment, uh, Mr. Judge Martinez's submission for, to be on the November 30th agenda, so I know that it requires two people, correct? That if somebody wants to submit an item on the agenda.
Yes.
So I'd like to be the, the other.
The second person?
The second person.
So it's Judge Martinez and Mrs. Ramos to go ahead and bring it to the agenda, on the agenda for the November 30th, uh, regular board meeting, the oil and gas program?
The possibility of, uh, having a, a program, yes.
Okay.
Bringing it back?
Just to, to have the discussion.
It's gonna be a discussion.
Yeah.
I, I believe it might be a little bit different by what you're saying, but we can't discuss anymore.
No.
Mr. Mayor is watching me, and I said, okay, I know. Cut.
Maybe during dinner.
Okay, so the next item I have is next meeting dates, tentative Monday, November 29th at 6:00 PM, we're gonna have a board workshop here, correct? Then Tuesday, November 30th at 6:00 PM, we'll have a regular board meeting. Then Tuesday, December 7th at 6:00 PM, we'll have a special board meeting, and then to be determined, December 16th or the 21st at 6:00 PM, a regular board meeting.
Nobody gets vacation days.
So, put it on your calendars.
Motion's.
I know, right? So do you have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Okay, so I have it by Ms. Elizondo, and second by Ms. Ramos. Meeting adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.